Okay, this special meeting of the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District is now called to order. We do have a consent agenda. Is that right? There is not a consent agenda, excuse me.
Not in our package.
There is no old business, but there is some new business. We are going to discuss Resolution Number SMPD 19-1216, Ad Valorem Taxes and the 2017 Levy Certification. So I will turn this over to Nola, our Director of Financial Services. Sorry, I didn't... Nudig. Von Nudig.
Nola Von Nudig.
Okay.
Took me a while to get that to.
Okay, well, I'll eventually learn to just rattle it off, I promise.
Quite all right. That's quite all right. The Shelton Metropolitan Park District held the hearing associated with the preliminary budget process on November 14th, 2016. During this hearing, anticipated revenues and requested expenditures were provided for the ensuing year, and the 2017 Ad Valorem Property Tax Levy public hearing was a part of that meeting. The Ad Valorem Resolution and Levy Certification was originally approved on November 28th, 2016 after consulting with the Mason County Assessor. The staff has amended the levy, increased percentage, and updated the levy certification to reflect those amendments. The staff requests adoption of Resolution Number SMPD 19-1216, Resolution of the Shelton Metropolitan Park District of Shelton, Washington, superseding Resolution Number SMPD 17-1116, and increasing the Ad Valorem taxes for calendar year 2017, and adoption of the updated 2017 Levy Certification.
Okay. Does anyone... Oh, we do allow public comment on this action, so I... It's what it says. So does anyone have any public comment?
No, there's no one signed up.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the other two commissioners?
No.
Nope. All right. I don't have any questions either. So would someone... Do we just adopt this, or do we need a motion to approve it?
A reading of the resolution and then adopt.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Resolution Number SMPD 19-1216, a resolution of the Shelton Metropolitan Park District of Shelton, Washington, superseding Resolution Number SMPD 17-1116, and increasing the Ad Valorem taxes for the calendar year 2017, and the Levy Certification for calendar year 2017.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I... I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Is there an administration report? No general public comment. We will be announcing the next meeting when it gets a little bit closer, and this time, this meeting of the Shelton Metropolitan Park District is adjourned. Thank you.
Just a little housekeeping.
Yeah. Shut the doors.
I'd like to call the City of Shelton Commission a meeting to order, and would you please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming out tonight. First item on our agenda is our weekly commission reports, and I usually start with Commissioner Moore.
The only thing I have this week is I have a Mason Transit Authority Board meeting tomorrow evening, and that's it for this week.
And Commissioner McDowell?
Yes, I just came back from the public forum at the PewDie... PewDie Commission, and they were talking about the sale of the building down here on Cota Street, so that's where I was earlier tonight. Tuesday, I'm be at Tim Sheldon's, I guess called Going Away Reception, at the Commissioner's Chambers at noon tomorrow, and that is it for me.
All right, thank you very much. On Tuesday, which will be tomorrow, I will also be attending the Tim Sheldon semi-retirement from County Commission work party.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and I'll also be doing a ribbon cutting for the Chamber tomorrow afternoon. On Wednesday, I am planning to be at the Mason County Title signing some papers for the acquisition of the Eagle Point property, unless I'm wrong about that. Is that correct? I got it, Dan. I had to call three times to get that information correct, so that's a great piece of property. That's be a wonderful asset for the City of Shelton. That completes our weekly commission reports, and next would be the general public comment opportunity, and I believe we have at least one person signed up.
We do. Randy Lewis is first.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. Recently, the Journal wrote an editorial attempting to point the finger of blame at prior commission members for not asking the right questions of staff, thus we see the disasters that are now being uncovered by current staff. I don't personally agree with that premise, but the Journal... But if the Journal wants to throw the prior commission under the bus, including the prior Commissioner of Finance, I guess it's a free country. Early this year, a Journal editorial criticized the then-new commission for dragging their feet on hiring a new city administrator. I'm not sure what the Journal expected of her, but soon following her inauguration, Commissioner McDowell publicly began a process to search for a new city administrator, in part using suggestions made during public comment periods. As another example, several months ago, she asked me to help her look at whatever information was available to support the implementation by the prior commission of multi-year baked increases in the sewer rates. Prior staff pointed us to a spreadsheet constructed by a consultant, which the prior city administrator assured me was very complicated. I suppose I shouldn't have whirred my pretty little head over it, but we did not believe that such an impactful decision should be made from data coming out of what was essentially a black box. Rather than very complicated, instead, I found the spreadsheet to be very straightforward. The former employee maintaining the spreadsheet confirmed my observation that the city growth assumption, and thus the revenue projected, was not consistent with a separate higher growth assumption used to justify big expenses in the projection. In other words, the basis for revenue and expense projections was not internally consistent. The scheduled sewer rate increase for 2017, my understanding, is 5 percent, not a planned 10 percent as I have seen stated. Last I checked, implementation of a change in the sewer rate schedule would require a vote of the commission preceded what I would expect to be a complete and transparent public discussion of the basis of a proposal, but not yet... Of a proposed but not yet officially planned increase of an increase of next year's scheduled sewer rates. A comment was made in a recent meeting that the city will not make a profit on the annu agreements with other entities to absorb their digested sludge, which, by the way, is my new favorite phrase. I'm not sure what was meant by no profit, but in my humble opinion, if the additional net revenue generated by taking on these deals is not positive, then why do it in the first place? The Public Works Director has testified that these deals would bring in revenue with small incremental expense. Sounds like a profit to me. Mayor Krantz was wise to point out the necessity of negotiating good deals for the city. The point of all this is that net revenue for these deals should be embedded within the overall sewer projections, in my opinion, as a basis to provide relief for citizens on sewer rates, rates that have already increased 67 percent since 2012. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Forrest Cooper. Thank you very much, Commission. Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad Avenue and 807 South 14th Street. Tonight, I bring to you a concern for safety and aesthetics on Railroad Avenue in response to the ongoing LED streetlight conversions. The new LED units being placed in the streetlights along Railroad Avenue are not adequate for this particular application. The light output is so low, I witnessed a pedestrian in the crosswalk with little to no illumination cast on him, even though he was directly under a streetlight. The light output is exactly one-half the illumination put out by the existing high-pressure sodium bulbs, and is four times less bright than the white LED units recently installed on Cota Street. I measured the light output with a meter and found the results to match the perceived output. One main reason the output is so low is in part to an LED unit intended for post lamps being installed in a hanging fixture located much higher than a post lamp. The unit is an EV Luma Omni 70 watt bulb with LEDs that project out the side of the bulb array rather than projected downward. This also introduces more light pollution into the atmosphere than a downward-facing unit. The appropriate LED unit would be one intended for high bay fixture retrofits and must be rated for closed installation within a housing in order to dissipate the heat properly. Now for the aesthetic concerns, why are these units 2100 Kelvin orange light and not the 4,000 to 5,000 K white lights being used all around the city? Recently, the fixtures at 7th and Railroad were changed out with white and looked great. Cota is white and looks good also. I'm assuming any of the new fixtures that will adorn the new Railroad Avenue corridor from Highway 101 to downtown will also be white, resulting in a well-lit road ending at a poorly lit and gloomy downtown. To add, the color quality of the new units makes the fixtures look old and dingy, not in an antique way. It's similar to yellowed and aged plastic lenses. The old HIDs were at least brilliant. So for the sake of consistency, please consider choosing a unit more compatible with the other changeouts around town. To add, there are so many different bulbs and units with different white points, lumens, and CRI ratings, the only way to find the right fit is to try several before settling on one. During our recent LED conversion at the studio, we tried many different units until we found a suitable replacement. A suggestion for the streetlights would be to change out one block first and assess the results. I am available for consulting and would love to volunteer my time to the city to help our downtown light up brighter and better. Thank you so much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Forrest, I'll hold the ladder for you.
There we go.
Thanks.
Anyone else for general public comment?
No one else has signed up.
All right. At this time, I would like to recess out of our meeting for a public hearing for the 2017 final budget, and at this time, I'd like to turn this over to our city manager, Ryan Wheaton.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. What you're going to see on the screen and what you have in front of you are some numbers that we're asked... We were asked to produce, so you see the water and sewer budget information. Last meeting, what we talked about this two weeks ago, the question was raised, can we decrease the rate increases for water and sewer that are planned for next year? The adopted rate increases are 3% and 5%. So what you see in front of you, you have the 2017 additional revenue from those increases, and then added on to that, the tax that we would receive, and then underneath that total line, you see the total additional revenue from those increases for both water and sewer. So in water, we are projecting just over $82,000 next year, and in sewer, we're projecting $261,214 in addition to what we would see if there was no increase. We've also included two lines at the bottom to indicate what the ending balance will be for both the water fund and the sewer fund, so you can see first what that looks like if we do the increases, and then if those rate increases were to be removed, that money would come from those funds, and so you can see the difference there. If we went ahead with eliminating those rate increases, you would see that reduction in the... Essentially, that's just a math problem. It's the... So in the water, what you'd see is, instead of ending with 1.3 million, we'd end with little over 1.2 million, once you subtract out that $82,606.
All right, so at this point, you're asking for... Should we have any public comment at this moment? In this... In this, do we...
I think that's fair. What we're going to need...
Says public testimony is something. So do you want to do more before we get to a public testimony?
I would just say that next week, we need to adopt the budget for next year, and we need to get a decision tonight as to what you would like us to do. If you would like us to maintain the increases that are here, if you're looking at changing something, then we would need to know before next week. Otherwise, we will go ahead with the numbers that are there, and if need be, we would look at doing that, or adopting an amendment at some point in the future. But at this point, the increases that you see in front of you are budgeted to 2017.
We'd love to do that. I think we'll have anybody from the public speak first, and then we will do our comments, and then we will. Because it looks like a public testimony is warranted here. If there's anybody that has an opinion which is strictly to the increase or decrease on water and sewer rates, this would be the opportunity from the public on this issue. If you'd like to come forward and state your name for the record, I think you have to sign in on a separate sheet.
Randy Lewis. Some observation, I don't think I'm allowed to ask questions, but as far as those projections go, I was wondering if any thought was given to population behavior? For example, for water and sewer, would they alter their behavior because rates are increased or not increased? Or will less people come into town that might have been projected for next year? If these are increased or not increased, or maybe people leave town? I'm just... I was just wondering, were you assuming a static population under both assumptions, increase of whatever increases you were looking at? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? This is the opportunity. Seeing no one coming forward, now we have an opportunity to talk about this issue, and so I guess if either of my fellow commissioners would like to say something about this, this would be the opportunity to do that.
I have some questions. So would you say again what the increases are? 3 percent for water, 5 percent for sewer? Is that...
So what was projected was 3 and 10.
Uh huh.
What ended up in this budget is off of that? So what you see in front of you there is, for some reason, there is a 4 percent increase in water and only a 5 percent in sewer. Part of that was that during the budget process, the thought was that there may be some movement here, so we wanted to project low. If we're to add it in, that money will be added to the ending balance of water and sewer. So we're not using anything from the general fund here. If there's a change to this, the only change that we'll see up or down will be to the ending balance of each fund.
Okay. So this already has an adjustment in it from what we were anticipating?
Correct.
Okay, so... And these amounts aren't like on the total bill, these are just on the water portion and the sewer portion?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like the entire bill is going to go up 9 percent?
It would be just on water and sewer individually.
I guess my concern and my question all along would be to make sure that we are keeping up with those increases so that we don't end up with a 10 or a 12 percent increase in a year or so. That would be my big concern.
It's a fair thing to say. Even if we reduce it, it can potentially absorb it with the fund balance for both water and sewer. What we would ultimately do, though, is we would compound it for an extra year. We're going to... If we follow this model, we will get to an increase at some point. In addition to that, we're going to talk about solid waste at the end of this meeting, where we'll see what happens if we aren't planning for some of these. I know last time we talked about this, Commissioner Moore, you asked if we can review the entire rate plan that's out there?
Yes.
The answer is yes. It is going to be a little more involved than we initially thought, so that's something that we'll be bringing back in the next month or so as we take a look at the entirety of that rate plan. But for this, the question is a fair one. If we don't do this now, will we have to do it in the future? If we follow the rate plan that we have in front of us, yeah, we will have to do it.
Yeah, and that's what caused the huge increases of the last few years as we've gone up. Okay, I... This seems reasonable to me.
I think it's good to have a conversation about this. What's happened in my life is, over the past five years, is I was told certain things, and certain increases had to be done, and I was found out that that was not the case, and that money was taken out of one fund to put into another fund, and so my... We are just coming into an area where we have new staff, a new city manager, we are looking at numbers probably, hopefully, a little bit more carefully, and that I still have a little... Just a little bit of distrust, maybe, on the way things were done in the past concerning rate increases. And so I believe in small incremental rate increases. I believe if we lock in for a 1 and 1/2 or 2 percent raise on infrastructure, you know, rates, and they're fairly consistent, that that's much better than us doing a 38 percent or whatever increase within a six-month period. And I guess what I feel, when I think about water and sewer, I think about the ratepayers, and I think about them. If we think we're having some financial difficulties, they are also having financial difficulties. And that, at this point, I am not totally convinced of numbers and exactly what we really need, because I think we're still learning, we're going through a little growth period here, and that I would rather err on the side of no increases on water and sewer for one year, and then we'll take a look at things and think about it, because I was told things in the past, not by anybody in this current administration, about certain things, and found out that, oh, we had an extra half a million dollars here. And so I... I'm just saying, I want to represent the citizens and that we are trying to build trust with them, because there has been some probably trust that went sideways in the past few years, and I was talked into certain things that were not, I believe, the realistic picture. So I'm still a little skeptical of kind of, because we're just now starting to get new players and get new numbers and things, and I just feel that I sympathize with the ratepayers, and after, like what was said by a certain citizen here, 67 percent increases since 2012, that I would err on the side of saving our ratepayers some money and then being more realistically taking a look at what we need to do once we get our feet kind of underneath us in this area. So I'm not distrusting these numbers, but I'm coming from institutional caution from why we're 60 million in debt and why we got there and what we kind of got to do. And the last person or the last people I feel we need to kind of punish is the ratepayers. And so I speak to them, and I know that, you know, all I hear is our water and sewer garbage rates, you know, are the highest in the state, and it's hard for people to survive and things like that. So as you said, we would not, by not raising these at all, we would not... It would not totally upset the apple cart or whatever, and I just... I just feel I want to get our financial numbers and our direction and how much we need for things. I want to get... We've got all new people within two or three months here. I would rather have some time to really look at that, and then, you know, if I err, then we got to raise a little bit more next time, but I would err in not raising the water or sewer rates for a one-year period.
Kathy, did you...
Yes, I...
I want to talk again.
I tend to agree with that. I know I talked about freezing the water rates, and someone said, well, that's just a few dollars a month. Well, psychologically, no matter how much it is, people go, they're freezing the rates for one year on the water. That is so cool. You know, just a few dollars a month. Same with the sewer. We need to give... We need to give our citizens a break if we possibly can for a short amount of time, if we possibly can do that.
I agree that it's really difficult for our citizens who are paying the high water and sewer bills. I think we always have to remind ourselves that we are able to take the sludge from other areas, because we do have a state-of-the-art sewer. We do have a lot of increase in our shellfish harvesting, and we have a new park down at the end of that area, and those things are made possible by the fact of the work that we have done. I've attended many, many, many classes and workshops that caution against trying to do the popular thing and not raising rates. That is one of the things that got us into this difficulty with the huge sewer bills that we have. So I am really, really hesitant, I realize that I'm outvoted here, but I am really hesitant to put off the rate increases. We've done a lot of work, and I too had a question about the numbers, but there is no reason that we couldn't approve this and then change them later if we do discover that the numbers are completely out of line. There isn't a reason for that. So my feeling is that the responsible thing and the unpopular thing is to continue with the gentle increases so that we can continue to make our... Excuse me, Randy, I'm talking. So that we can make our payments that we are bound to do. So, you know...
I have a question. I do have a question. A while back, I looked at the sewer spreadsheet, and there's in, I believe it was for the year 2020, there was going to be a $40 million upgrade on the sewer system. Am I wrong about that?
We haven't gone into that at this point.
And that was the reason that we decided to raise the rates?
That'll be part of the research that we do when we finish that question that Commissioner Moore asked last time. We plan to look through everything that's been planned.
And that rate... That upgrade on the sewer was due to the many, many people that were going to fall into the City of Shelton and build houses and jobs, and that didn't happen.
It has not happened to this point.
It has not happened. So if we take a look at that again, our sewer capacity is at 40 percent? That means... Is that right, 40 percent capacity?
For the main sewage treatment plant.
For the main sewage? Is that 40 percent capacity right now or more?
We're going to need to check and get back...
Okay, okay. So I'm just saying, if that is, we've got a lot of room to grow. So let's take that $40 million that they projected, and let's adjust the rates to as if it wasn't there, push it out a few years. I don't know.
We're going to spend some time after we're done with the budget work, we're going to spend some time looking at what the projections were to make sure that we're in line with those numbers.
And these conversations are good, because this is what we get paid for. This is what the citizens want us to do, is to question numbers, to think about it, to be realistic, and we... No one person is to blame for anything. This is a combination of a lot of things, the recession being a big one, but the people go... The city went through a recession, our ratepayers went through a bigger recession. Their checkses are not going up, and, you know, I just feel that it's... I feel we need to get our new Public Works Director and our new Financial Director and our new City Manager. I think those departments, we need to get some ground... We need to get some experience in those before we assume that a lot of these numbers or the way we've been doing things are going to be necessary. And that's just a feeling. I guess I've been uncomfortable because, you know, I have... Things did not line up the way I thought I was told, not by one, but by maybe many people, and as representing the people outside of this bubble, I really strongly believe that we need to give these ratepayers an opportunity to know that we... If we come back next year, I would trust this team to give me exactly what we need, how we need to go into the future, but I believe you can't change a whole system in two or three months, and I do not... I was not real favorable with where we've been doing things, because that's what got us into 60 million in debt, and the ratepayers are not the ones to be punished.
I don't think it's a punishment. I think it's, you know, we have our obligations, and that's why I asked for a review to see if the rate increases were actually necessary, if they are in line with what we would be expecting, because we're all gun-shy. We've all made decisions based on information that we were given that was maybe not quite accurate. And so I think it's really important. I certainly don't want to pay... I certainly don't want to pay any more in utility bills than I have to. And I did discuss with a friend, Church, the other day, who was saying that for a family of four, her city bill is like two hundred and fifty dollars a month, which is really high. But there's a reason that it's high like that. I don't know what the, the reason is. I know that my, my kids are in town with families of five and their bills are not nearly that high. So, part of it is education too. We need to figure out what we can do to ease the burden that can be eased on people, whether it's a faulty line, they have a leak they're not aware of. We need to let them know that we do care and we do feel the pain and we do want their rates to be as low as possible.
I just feel, I feel that we need to take, hit the pause button and take one year of rates being the same. And then I really believe in the, our city manager and the new people that we've got online for different departments. And I really feel that it takes a while to get all this stuff together and, and to know about this, this population growth and these comprehensive plans. And, and basically, I am, if I could ask you this question, you said basically, we could afford to do this, that we're not going off the edge of the cliff by, by this three hundred thousand dollar thing. This, this is not, you know, we could probably absorb it. And if we find out we can't, then we get into, I believe in small incremental increases. But I also believe that we are coming out of an area to where we raised rates for a purpose and that I found out we had a half a million dollars left over, we put it into something else. And that totally made me angry. And so I'm very cautious about raising anything until I know one hundred percent we have to do it. And so I'm still coming out of some of those past feelings and questions about raising rates. So, that's probably about the best way I, I would lean in the direction of zero.
Could you refresh my memory about what, what was the half million that was switched around?
Well, what it was, and I think the general recorded this correctly, I was told basically that we had to raise, I went back when we raised thirty-eight percent in a six-month period. I was told, and no one person is to blame, I was impressed that we had to raise the rates to this degree or we would default on our loans. Okay? And that was, and that, and if we remember those meetings and you look back, I fought against raising those water and sewer rates by thirty-eight percent viciously. I mean, I was really saying, this is way too much to do. But I actually got talked into it because I was under the assumption that we were going to go not be able to pay our loans. Six months later, eight months later, I found out that we took a half a million dollars out of that department and put it in that sewer line that ran out Lake Boulevard. That's where that half a million dollars went, out the sewer line to Lake Boulevard, of which nobody's hooked up to. And so if we had an extra half a million dollars, that was, in my impression, was totally ratepayers' money to pay on debt reduction and it didn't happen. That half a million went for a new sewer line and I think that's wrong. And so I'm not saying anybody sitting in this room today is going in that direction, but I am not totally, I don't believe, we all know yet where we are on all these numbers exactly for me to want to keep increasing rates until we really know. And I trust six months from now, we will all know a lot better from what we've just been kind of coming out on, multimillion dollar projects that we are trying to get our hands on. This is another example. And so we're coming out of something, we're going into something and that's good because I totally have faith and confidence in what we're doing in the future. But the past has not, that's why we've had to give up a lot of grant money is because we've made wrong decisions. And if any of these numbers are any reflection of kind of what the past has told us, you know, I just think it's, nobody could change the way we're all doing this stuff this quick. And so I have a cautionary note on the, on the numbers, not blaming anybody sitting in this room. But if I'm going to err, I'm going to err on the side of the ratepayers.
Okay, I just want to make a, oh, Kathy, I'm sorry, I'm going in front of you.
That's okay. I just wanted to make the comment that by not increasing the rates for one year, putting them moratorium, I like that word, freeze on them for one year, we're, we're saying to people that we're really trying to get the city going, if we possibly can afford it. We're trying to get the city, city going, get it kicked jumped for new business and new residents. And I think that that can be an attraction to new business and new residents coming into the city, that, hey, they froze these for a year, they're trying to do something positive for the business and for the citizens of Shelton. So, that's why I think that a one-year, no rate increase for one year is, is a good thing.
I just wanted one clarification. I think that the half a million dollars, you can't just take the money and put it, use it for debt repayment. So, it had to be used for some type of construction, not for debt repayment.
What I said was true. So, I mean, it was half a million dollars was taken and used for something that was
Four hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
Was not told to me what it was going to be, what it was being spent on until after the fact. And that, I'm just telling you, I want, I do not want to spend, and this is a different subject, I do not want to continue spending millions of dollars on new infrastructure or infrastructure that we do not need at the moment until we can afford to finish those projects. Now, incremental rates, small, this fits into it, it's not the end of the world, we could raise the rates, but you know what? I tell you what, if I talk to people, they are not, they are very concerned about their water and sewer and garbage bills and that I would err on this side and, and just see where we are about a year from now. So, that seems where we're leaning. And it's nothing wrong, there's no right, no wrong, it's all good debate, you know. So, but if we needed to make a motion or if we...
It would help for us to get direction. We're going to bring back a budget next week. So, if you would take a vote so that we could determine what number should go in, that would help us quite a bit.
So, I would entertain a motion.
This may be scratchy, but I'm going to give it a shot.
I'd give a motion.
I move that we revisit the, the rates and that we look to freezing them for one year, water and sewer rates for one year. I guess that's good enough, huh?
Yeah, absolutely. And I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just say that I, I believe that it would be better until we have more time to look at the actual numbers because I'm not looking forward to higher increases or extending the debt. So, that's my statement.
So, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Does that give staff the clarification they needed to continue? Thank you very much. All right, now, let me see what we need to do. We need to close, maybe we should have closed that hearing before we had that motion. I'll close the public hearing, return to our regular meeting at this time. Would now be the time for us to have that motion after we've closed the public hearing?
It would, but we will adjust that.
Adjust that?
We've got, basically, we were just asking for you, the commissioners, to give direction to the staff so that we can get it back.
I was trying to get there.
For next week.
Just I rushed it a little.
For the final budget presentation, so.
Okay. So, are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, could we please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Consent, excuse me, consent agenda, payroll warrants numbered three zero two nine through three one seven zero and one three one eight six through one three two zero nine in the amount of six hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. Handwritten warrant numbered one three two one zero to KeyBank in the amount of four thousand eighty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. Handwritten warrant numbered one three two one one in the amount of thirty dollars and zero cents. Vouchers numbered one three two one two through one three three zero nine in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Meeting minutes from the commission meeting of November seventh, two thousand and sixteen, study session minutes of November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and commission meeting minutes from, of November twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
So, a second?
I second it.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Moving right to item number G, this is an action item agenda, and I would like to turn this meeting over to our police chief, Darren Moody.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you commissioners. This is, was brought to you last week as an overview of the STOP grant. It's a family violence grant. And as explained to you previously, it's a reimbursement-only grant. There are certain crimes that fall within this. After the fact, we can submit for salary, overtime, transcription services that relate to these specific crimes. So, again, we're not accepting any monies. What we're asking for is reimbursement through this grant. We've had it for at least five years previously. We are the lead agency in it this year. Any questions?
No, I think we're in favor of something like that.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, I'm...
We're asking, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If we could just ask for public comment and then...
Absolutely. I was looking at that. Is there any public comment about receiving some money? Seeing none, all you need is for our, to concur with you and for me to sign, correct?
Correct.
No motion needed?
We need the commissioners to agree to the grant and the signatures.
We'll need a motion.
We do need a motion, okay.
We do.
Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I make a motion to approve the STOP Violence, the STOP Violence Against Women Formula Grant and for mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Shelton.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. There is no old business or new business tonight, but there is an administration report. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to our city manager, Ryan Wheat.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. Tonight, we want to begin a conversation about solid waste and I want to give some background information. And then what we'll plan to do is in the next couple of weeks, we're going to bring forward some options for how to move things forward. I believe in April, you had a presentation by Public Works discussing kind of an all-in option for solid waste, which would be the city taking a more active role in that line of business. We're going to bring forward that option as well as the alternative, which is for us to back out of the business and contract with a private carrier, private company. The background I want to provide today is just a little bit of the financial information for what the solid waste department looks like. So, that fund, two years ago, at the end of two thousand and fourteen, the ending fund balance for solid waste was nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. We are projecting that at the end of this year, two thousand and sixteen, that that ending fund balance will be zero. Some of the things that we've seen the last three years, in two thousand and fourteen, we ran a deficit of just over ninety-five thousand dollars. Two thousand and fifteen, the deficit for solid waste was a little over one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The projected deficit for two thousand and sixteen for solid waste is two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. In addition to those deficits, the last couple of years, we've also had some equipment purchases. And we have reached a situation where the way we've done business in solid waste the last few years is really unsustainable. We do not anticipate running a deficit at this point for two thousand and seventeen. With that in mind, if we did, those deficits would likely have to come out of the general fund. And really, the reason why we're not anticipating to see a deficit this next year is because we underwent a twenty-three percent rate increase over a few different point periods in the last few years. And so those rate increases to catch up have gotten us to the point where we don't expect to see a deficit. With that being said, we do want to bring forward those two options, like I mentioned. And the main reason there is because we don't want to get into this situation a year from now where we're talking about having to pull money out of the general fund every year.
Absolutely. So, at this time, what do you want from us? Just, this is a first touch?
This is a, a touch for you guys. We'll bring forward a couple of options. They're going to, it's going to be a tough decision, one way or another, because this is going to, it's going to cause an influx of project money for us to look at taking on more of the business or it's going to involve us doing something that's been talked about for a long time, which is privatizing the solid waste department. And those are going to be, that's going to be a tough decision for the three of you. We will come back in about two weeks with information about both options. And if there are any questions now you want us to prepare for, you can let me know.
I just want to be sure that when we have that conversation and we make that decision, that we do have identified either way which money we will be using for the C Street cleanup.
Is recycling a part of this discussion?
Yes, it is.
And what happened is, and I think this was right about the first year, five years ago when I was mayor, we were, we just added recycling to our garbage service. And the question I had was, will we make money or will we lose money by doing this? And someone, and I'm not naming any names, someone said, we hope so, that we hope that we wouldn't be facing a nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand deficit. You know what I'm saying? So, we were hoping that it wouldn't go that way. I was not guaranteed either way, but there was the hopeful on it. And, you know, the deal is if you're going to run it, you got to run it and it's got to be competitive and it's got to be affordable to the ratepayers. So, it'll be interesting to talk about this and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You can put this in the back of your brain or write it down or whatever.
I'm going to write it down.
If we were to get rid of our solid waste department, everything, how would, what would we use to pay off the C Street cleanup?
We will have an answer for that.
I think that's a very important question.
Yeah, we have a couple of big things coming down the line, Basin Three and the C Street. And just one of them is a big deal. And we are committed, we won't have any leeway on those on to-do or not to-do. This is, we stretched a lot of things to where we have to make the hard decisions. And so that's why I like to get focused with priorities and make sure that, that if we got a department or something that is not making money or, you know, it's not, you know, working, we got to really look at it. So, all right, is that just about it?
That's it. The other thing I would mention for administrative report is that we did touch base with the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization. And we let them know that we wanted to present another option to them. We have a piece of property that we currently own that was the former Parkview Apartments. So, down kind of near where Ritz...
Parkland.
Parkland.
Parkland, I think. Anybody?
It's View.
View? Oh, I stand corrected. Parkland, Parkview, Parkview, okay.
So, we made an offer that we wanted them to consider that option. I know that when I met with folks from that group, they were open to exploring all options that were presented to them. It sounded at the time when we met last week that that property and their amount of funding right now may not allow them to build the size of facility that they were looking for. But we did make an offer to them just so they had another option to consider. I know they met tonight and I don't know if the meeting's over or not, but that was, that offer was provided to them.
What was the, what was the outcome? Did they do an executive vote? They're selling it?
Three, zero in favor of settlement.
Okay.
We tried, don't we?
So, that's, that's the last part of the administrative report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any administration, wait, any, any administration final touches?
None at this point.
Nothing, Public Works, no touches?
There is, there is one final touch. Do you want to?
We would just like to bring forward well one options for the commission to look at, that they have coming.
The wet options?
So, last, in the summer, you voted to rehab well one and the vote was to take out loan money to do so. One of the alternatives we're looking at now is can we, we're obviously not going to be able to get to that in the immediate future, but we want to make sure that the loan is the only way to possibly fund that. So, Craig and Public Works team and finance are going to look to see if there are any other funding sources available and we're going to bring some of that information forward in the future.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that. Okay, our next meeting will be, okay, and by the way, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year and all that stuff. You know, just thought we could put that in someplace in the meeting there. But our next meeting will be on a Tuesday, not a Monday, because we're going to take, December twenty-sixth is a Monday, we're taking that off in respect of the holiday. So, our next meeting will be next Tuesday, that'll be at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.